Grill and chili fast food restaurant. Do I have a representative?
Yes, sir. You have Chris Anderson with Hannigan Engineering.
Okay, Chris, you had the ball. Could you please give us a...
Absolutely. Stephanie, do you have the ability to put the plan up or do I have permission to do so?
I can pull the plan up. Ashley, I can make you the host if you like.
Once you make him, it's easier that way, and he can use the pointer.
Okay. Okay, I made you the host. Let me know if you're able to control.
Okay.
And share your screen. And also for the record, I believe I'm recording now.
Okay, good.
Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
We have, yeah.
Great. Again, for the record, Chris Anderson with Hannigan Engineering has had an Fidelis for site plan approval for the construction of a drive-through and dine-in restaurant at 18 Stack Boulevard. Currently, the property is vacant, but historically, the property did contain a dine-in restaurant, an old Pizza Hut. At this point in time, the building has been razed, but the site has remained essentially intact with areas of paved parking and miscellaneous other brush and utilities throughout the site. It's the intent of the applicant to construct a new Dairy Queen Grill and Shell Fast Food Restaurant with provisions for interior and exterior dining as well as a drive-through window as well, as you can see here. Access to the site will be provided by three curb cuts along Stack Boulevard, which runs along the left side of the page, if you will. The primary entrance will be just south of the proposed building. Drive entrance will extend around the entire perimeter of the building and then exit to the north side of the building as well. This drive will provide access to parking as well as the drive-through window and drive-through lanes, if you will. The third entrance will be located to the southerlymost portion of the property. This entrance is intended to be utilized by the delivery trucks. It's been designed to accommodate a WB-67, so a large semi truck. The trucks will pull in through this entrance, extend to the north side of the building, and then pull out onto Stack Boulevard. It's anticipated that these operations will be done during off-hours, so there'll be minimal interruption between vehicles and the delivery trucks themselves. As for the drive-through lane, we're currently showing approximately 11 vehicle queuing spaces on the property for the drive-through window. There'll be six between the drive-through window and the actual ordering board, and additional five behind the ordering board as well. Just for correlation, three spaces are required by the ordinance. As for utilities, stormwater will be accommodated on the site and be directed towards a rain garden, which will be located on the southernmost portion of the property. This will provide treatment and some mitigation of the runoff on the site and then ultimately connect to the system within Stack Boulevard. Just as a side benefit to the project, there should be a net decrease in the repurposed area, so that's an added benefit to the property. Sewer water and electrical connections will be provided within the existing infrastructure within Stack Boulevard itself. As part of the overall development, a grease trap will also be included within the sewer connection system, so that's an added benefit as well for the project. We are providing some of the landscaping requirements. We are providing 14 trees, as is required by the ordinance. Those are interspersed throughout the property, as well as several areas for some landscape beds along the outer perimeter of the building as well as throughout the parking, so that we're providing compliance with the landscape requirements of the ordinance. We are requesting a waiver from the requirement that a landscape architect provide the plan. In lieu of that, we're proposing to, prior to occupancy, providing a planting list and planting plan that will detect the location and types of plantings located throughout the site. Besides that, that's the general gist of the project. If there's any questions from the board, I'll be more happy to address them.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have any questions from anybody on the board? Last that, could you point out, there's no storage areas?
Yes, there are areas for snow storage. Switching over to page here. Essentially, they'll be located around the outside of the site and landscape islands between the parking areas. So by the ordinance, we're required to have, we have just about 7% of the overall parking area dedicated to snow storage.
Okay. And I think five is required. Is it, what's your space between your vehicles to bypass? Say, somebody wants to go in without going into the queue.
Sorry, I have to enter silence in the meeting. So there's, on the southerly side of the property, on the southerly side of the drive-through entrance, there's a 16-foot lane along the backside of the parking spaces, so the vehicle can pull out in angled parking, so you don't need the full width of a typical 24-foot wide drive aisle. So vehicles can pull out with 15 feet and then pull around. And on the north side of the building, there's 21 feet on the backside of the parking spaces as well. So there's more than adequate space for a vehicle to pull in and out of the space without interacting with the actual drive-through lane.
Okay, that looks good.
John, this is Paul. Both the DPW and the Board of Health had some comments that maybe Chris could address.
Absolutely.
You had that list, Chris?
Do you need me to read it to you, Chris?
Nope, I got them. If you'd like, I can have to go through pretty much all the department head comments.
Those are the only two department heads that had comments.
Why don't you go through all the department heads and then we get a list of it?
Okay. Conservation just had to provide us with a further recording of a Loma for the floodplain work, just so the board is aware. When you graphically look at the floodplain maps in the area, the property is within the floodplain, but when you look at the actual survey information of the property, it turns out that the site is not located within the floodplain. And a Loma, which is an amendment to the actual flood maps, was done with FEMA, and that was included with the supplemental. DPW had, sorry, Police Department had no comments. DPW requested a stamped illicit discharge statement for stormwater management. We provided the draft version of that for the department's review. It's simply a document that once everything is said and done, it's a statement saying that there's no illicit discharges going into the stormwater system, and it's just purely stormwater. That's typically something that's done right before the end construction. Their second comment is relative to the stormwater maintenance plan. There were some arithmetic errors on the estimated costs for the annual stormwater system. So we updated the operation and maintenance plan and incorporated that into our revisions to the plan department. Comment number three was relative to the service main. So all the services to the site have already been cut and capped, but the DPW would like us to remove the service mains or current old services all the way to the main and cap and cut them there, which is amenable to the proponent. And the fourth comment is relative to the sewer connection. Again, the existing service was still, the existing service is still on the site, and DPW would like us to remove that to the main, and we are amenable to that as well. Fire Department had a comment. And the Board of Health comment is relative to the sizing of the grease trap. So we have added the grease trap calculations based on the interior seating. To the utility plans, by code, we need to have 990 gallons per day capacity within the grease trap, and we're providing a 1,000-gallon tank, so we're in compliance with that portion of the regulations.
Okay, fine. Do we have any other questions? Size.
Apologies. It's intended that there will be a pylon sign that's been shown on the plan that's located outside the required setback for a sign. It's anticipated that that's going to be compliant with the zoning requirements, and it will be designed accordingly. And once everything is said and done, that'll be filed with the Building Department as well.
Okay. But is that shown on your plan?
Yes, it is. If you look on the screen right now, you can see it's right opposed in this corner of the site.
Okay. Okay.
Is the sign, Chris?
Do we have a size on that?
That will be determined prior to construction. As a typical of these kinds of developments, we don't know the final design requirements until, pretty much until construction, but it'll be reviewed with the Building Department and appropriate permits applied for with the final design.
So we're going to stay in accordance with the sign sizes based on our requirements?
Correct.
Do I have any other questions from the board? Do you have anything else that you want to add, Chris?
No, that's it.
Okay. I'll open it up. Do we have anybody in the audience that wishes to make a comment? Do I have an audience?
Yes. Hello?
Please identify yourself.
This is Dave Gagny.
Yes, David.
Hi, David. David, could you spell your name and your address for the record?
Yes, David Gagny, G-A-G-N-E. I live at 18 Newport Street in Pittsburgh, Mass., but it's my family, Longstone Limited Partnership, that owns this site at 18 Stack Boulevard, and we are looking forward to doing work with the Fidellis and Dairy Queen, and we think that would be a nice new, fresh addition to the property. And that's why we tore down the old Pizza Hut when they vacated last year. It was just so rundown. I didn't want anyone to try and repurpose the building. I wanted to start over with something fresh. So when the Fidellis and Hannigan Engineering and Chris came along with this idea, it was really well presented, and like I said, it's a nice new concept for the area, and I think it'll do very well, and I'm looking forward to doing business with them.
I only have one complaint with them. Too many calories.
I can tell you haven't been there lately.
As far as I have been there, Sal.
We could all go do some market research at the one in Boylston.
Yeah.
One in Cleggon.
Well, that one's only ice cream. This one will be food also.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So that was my only comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do I have anyone else that wishes to make a comment? Third and final time, I'll ask, do I have anyone else that wishes to make any comment? Back to the board. Anything else from the board? Okay, here or none, I think I have enough information. Motion would be in order.
I make that motion to close the hearing. Pat?
I will second that, Paul.
I have a motion made and second to close the hearing. A roll call, please.
John Souza.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Salvatore Chaconi.
Yes.
Thomas Carrigan, absent. Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yeah.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much.
We'll be adding on this later on in the meeting. Shortly. Okay. A call to order on the regular meeting. A roll call, please.
John Souza.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Hold on. Yes, and Steph, can you make sure Chris makes you the host again? Thanks.
Yes, yep. Salvatore Chaconi.
Yes.
Thomas Carrigan. Patrick Perla.
Here.
Paul Weiser.
Here.
Jason Parre.
Here.
Dean Valier.
Here.
And for the record, Thomas Carrigan is absent.
Okay. Minutes of previous meetings, February 1st.
I move to accept those minutes.
I'll second it.
Second by Sal. Okay, any additions, deletions, or corrections? Here or none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
We have to do a roll call, John.
Roll call. John Souza.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Salvatore Chaconi.
Yes.
Thomas Carrigan. Absent. Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yeah.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, plans submitted, special permit application to 12-Month Pleasant. This needs to be scheduled.
Yep, this was just a repurpose. They want to repurpose a portion of an existing building at 12-Month Pleasant for several one-bedroom apartments, so because special permit, I'll need to advertise that. And there's only one meeting in April, so we're looking at May 3rd at 6:30.
Okay.
So moved.
I'll second then. Sal moved. I second.
Okay.
You second it. Paul and Seth, I think I heard. All in favor, say aye.
Roll call. John Souza.
Sorry about that.
Okay, John Souza.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Salvatore Chaconi.
Yes.
Thomas Carrigan, absent. Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yeah.
And Dean Valier.
Yes.
This is kind of an interesting project. Mr. Vivencik talked to me on this. He's doing this for homeless people in town.
Oh, wow.
It'll be one, you know, single family with a small kitchen and quite a story, as he's mentioned it to me, so it looks like it should be well-received.
Great.
Okay, so motion carries. We have no old business and new business. Site plan approval for 18 Stack Boulevard Dairy Queen Grill and Chili Fast Food Restaurant. Do I have a motion?
Let me work it in. This is Paul.
Just, there's a waiver that needs to be approved first for the landscape architect.
Right.
So I'll move to grant that waiver.
Well, you have to make that motion as a motion.
Right, I move to grant the waiver for the landscape architect.
I have a...
I'll second that, yeah.
Landscape architect, any discussion? Here or none, call for the roll call.
John Souza.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Salvatore Chaconi.
Yes.
Thomas Carrigan, absent. Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yeah.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
And now I move that we approve the plan with the waiver.
Conditions. Do we have any conditions we had? Or we can make that part of the motion, make a motion with conditions.
The department had comments incorporated into the plan and that they followed the sign ordinance to the T. How's that?
I will second Sal's motion.
A small T. Yes, I have a motion in order to include all of the department head comments as part of the conditions. Okay. Motion by Paul?
By Sal, second by Paul.
Okay, Sal and Paul. Further discussion?
And that's with the waiver included, correct?
With the waiver included.
That's correct. Thank you.
All, save a roll call, please.
John Souza.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Salvatore Chaconi.
All right.
Thomas Carrigan, absent. Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Communication 6.1, Willow Street, definitive subdivision, metal lines at Willett. Final approval, planning board review all documentation provided and make determination on final endorsement. Stephanie, you want to give us a rundown on that, please, on what you have?
Is Bill Hannigan here?
I didn't see him.
Chris, do you know if Bill Hannigan will be here tonight? Hope I see him. He just... He's joining right now.
Perfect.
Basically, we have all the documents.
There he is, connecting the audio.
We have all the documents. I've been working closely with him. He's provided the Mylar, the DPW email approval, the Declaration of Covenant, the Operation and Maintenance Plan, and the Homeowners Association document was already agreed upon with the city attorney. So Annie S. provided a roadway covenant. Bill Hannigan, can you speak further to this? We're on the Willow Street final document approval.
I'm sorry, I got tied up in another meeting, but I think Stephanie just summarized everything that was already submitted.
Okay.
I can pull up the documents if anyone has any questions, or if Bill, you can pull them up either way.
I think that...
I read through them, but go ahead, Steph. I'm satisfied.
Does anybody have any questions, or is there anything you wish to add, Bill?
I think it's been a long process, but I appreciate the board's willingness to work with us on this and finalize this. I think that we had a good meeting to go over the final documents with the city solicitor, and she had reviewed everything. The covenant, typical covenant agreement that's been put forth is typical for roadway construction relative to what the city has done in the past. This puts all the lots up as basically collateral for the work as to be done, and then as we go through getting certain sections of the road completed, the, you know, if we get to buying at a certain point to release certain lots for construction, we then come back to the board with putting a bond over the portion of the road that we're asking for release on for those lots, and we work through that whole process with the DPW, some of the others that we've done in the past. Stephanie has brought up the one last item that we talked about in the last meeting was what pieces were being accepted by the city eventually. And one of the things that was a question was whether on the drainage system, the catch basins and manholes within drains within the roadway that would be accepted would in fact be accepted by the city should the city council vote to accept. But the specific items that would not be accepted now or in the future would be the drainage system components consisting of the detention basin, the underground storage units, which are within easements, the stormwater quality devices, all of which would be maintained by the homeowners association as well as the sewer force main, which would be maintained by the homeowners association as well. And Mark's response to my question was an affirmative relative to that information.
Sounds good. Does any members have any further questions? Okay, good.
I think just, just one question, and I know this is past the fact here. So if there are issues, who does the HOA go to for those issues? Do they come to the city? And I'm just wondering, you know, how do we, how do we regulate? And how do we enforce and police that, Bill? How is that going to be done?
Just... Prior to acceptance, the, well, there's kind of three phases to it. Prior to the developer turning it over to the HOA, the developer is responsible for everything. Once the developer turns it over to the HOA, the HOA is responsible for everything, and the developer is still responsible for those components in the roadway themselves. At that point, the developer would then be petitioning the city through the planning board and city council to accept it. Once it's accepted, the roadways, essentially, the only thing that's really being accepted by the city at the end of the day is the roadway, right-of-ways, the, you know, the pavement, the sidewalks, the actual roads themselves, the water line, basically, and the drainage lines and catch basins within the roadway. The entire sewer system would be owned by the, responsible by the HOA, and those portions of the drainage system that we listed before would also be responsible for the HOA. The HOA, if they have a problem with a city portion of it, they would talk to the DPW. But if anything else that they had a problem with, that's their own. If there was a problem with, for example, the, if an individual homeowner had a problem with their own E1 pump system, that's their own component. They're responsible for their own E1 pump system on their lot. But if there's a problem with the sewer force main, the HOA would be responsible for that.
And just, you know, when it goes to like cleaning out the traps, things like that, is there a schedule they follow, or is that part of the city's responsibility?
The catch basins in the street would be responsible by the developer or the HOA until it was accepted. Once it was accepted, the street would be, the catch base would then be cleaned out by the city. Everything else is the HOA. I think that's probably the simplest way to look at it.
Yep, no, that's what I wanted to get to. Yeah, thank you.
It's like any other, it would be like any other homeowner in the city. If they did not follow through, then the city would have to follow through the normal procedures as they would any landowner in the city to get their work done. Okay, but typically, the HOA, you know, they have a whole bill of, you know, I've seen this document, it's very, and you've seen it. It's quite extensive, and I feel fairly confident that it should be taken care of.
Yeah, I just wanted to just add footnotes, that's all.
Okay.
As everybody knows.
Yes, I think a motion is in order.
John, I just wanted to let the board know too that I'll have to work closely because I'll need all of you to come in or a majority to come in and sign the Mylar. So I'll contact each one of you to see and set up a time. If it needs to be on a weeknight or a weekend, that's okay too.
Thanks, Steph.
And I'd like to thank Mr. Hannigan for all his hard work on this. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I think.
I want to have work for Mr. Hannigan on this. No, that's good.
A lot of people, I think, as, that was amazing. I was commenting to my... A lot of people. I think we, as, that was amazing. I was commenting to my wife. Is we worked on this for, I don't know, a couple of years now, it seemed like. And, uh, they just approved nine thousand houses here in Northport in one week. So, what a difference. But anyway, with that said, um, I'd like to, uh, motion would be in order.
Motion to adjourn.
No, no, no.
Different motion. Well, what motion do you want, John? This is just communications.
It's all communication. So I just, I think everything is complete and, um, and, and accepted and ordered. Okay.
So, yeah, why do we need a final approval? We did the final approval, right? Yeah, this was just the communication. So we're good.
I think.
Now you can make your motion.
We, so, this is Carol. We, we didn't, we didn't condition our approval on this on these final documents. I just want, I, I, I say, what's the harm in making a final?
Yeah, that's.
That's okay, Carol. Go ahead.
Except the final.
Yeah. If you made a motion that everyone agrees that these final documents complete the process that need to have, the deployment needs to have for them to endorse, I think that would be appropriate. I think that's what Carol's thinking. I, I agree.
And can we vote on something that's listed under communications?
Oh, sure.
Yes. It could have been under, it could have easily have been under old business as well, I think.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Okay, so I, I, I make a motion to accept and approve all final documents submitted and, um, reviewed this evening.
Okay. By Carol, seconded by Sal. Any further discussion on this? You're not called for the roll call.
John Souza.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Salvatore Chaconi.
Aye.
Thomas Carrigan, absent. Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Jason Paray.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, we don't have a director's report per se. Um, but I am requesting that we go into executive session for, uh, personal reasons.
Um, John, before we do that.
Oh, what?
Um, I just wanted to ask the board as a reminder, um, the ethics, uh, yearly signed summary is due. Um, it used to be two years for the certificate. It still is two years for the certificate. I'm just waiting on Tom's certificate. But for, um, John, Carol, Sal, Tom, um, Pat and Paul, I just need you guys to sign that summary I sent out. You can take a picture of it and it back to me. That would be greatly appreciated.
I already did my, sent mine back to Elizabeth with my certificate.
Oh, okay, Paul. I had your certificate, but not your signed summary. Is there any way you could just forward that to me in her absence?
Uh, probably. I might need another summary, though.
Okay, we'll do. I'll resend everything out tomorrow for everyone. And then.
I didn't save it once I was done.
And then the other thing was Dean, if you could just, um, sign your MRPC paperwork for me so I could forward that over to the commission.
Aye, aye, Captain.
Thank you so much.
Aye.
Okay. Um, like to go into executive session, I require the roll call vote.
And.
Do we need to adjourn and not?
So I'll make, um, Sal, what we should, what we should do is, um, we moved into executive session without, um, returning to the, um, original meeting.
So moved, without returning and adjourning on, uh, on, uh, on finishing the executive session.
Right.
Yep.
And Stephanie, would you make, uh, there'd be a roll call, please?
Sure, I'm just trying to write as fast as I can. Hold on. Okay, John Souza.
Your time, Steph.
All right, John Souza.
Yes.
Al Vittorioso.
Yes.
Salvatore Chaconi.
Yay.
Thomas Carrigan, absent. Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Jason Paray.
Yeah.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Okay, Stephanie, can you make sure that there's no one, no one else on?
Yep.
And we're not recording.
And no recording.
Yeah.
And recording.